It's seven o'clock somewhere, right? So it's seven o'clock here and this is the regular city council meeting for Minutrista, October 2nd, 2023. First order, I'd like to remind everybody to turn their cell phones off or on silence so that they don't disrupt the meeting. And then second, would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, everybody, those of you here this evening, as well as those of you watching on YouTube later on. I'll start with introductions. I'm the mayor, I'm Lisa Whalen. To my left are council members Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy, and Kathleen Reifkin is absent this evening. And then on the end, we have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Fausky. And then we have Allie Palfus, who is our director of administration. And then to my right, our city administrator Jasper Krugel. And then David Abel is our community development director. And Sarah Sensala is our legal consultant, our attorney with Kennedy and Graven. And then sitting in for the chief this evening, welcome Officer Thompson. Justin Thompson is here on the chief's behalf. So with that, is there any changes? Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If there are none, we'll do that in just a second. If you want to pull anything, then we'll do it at that time. So with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So this evening, we don't have any special presentations or persons to be heard, so we'll move on to consent agenda items, and I believe you want to pull one?
Yes, I want to pull K.
Number... So K is resolution approving the interim use permit for the agricultural entertainment at 6480 and 6530 County Road 26. So with that, we will be approving... Any other ones you wish to remove? So with that, under consent agenda, we'll be approving A, which is approve our work session meeting minutes from September 6th, 2023. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from September 6th, 2023. C is approve our work session meeting minutes from September 18th, 2023. D is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from September 18th, 2023. E is approve support of St. Boniface Fire Relief Service Pension Request. F is a resolution to approve claims. G is approve the master subscriber agreement for Minnesota Court Data Services. H is adopt certification for unpaid utility fees for 2024 taxes. I is a resolution to adopt certification for land use special fees to 2024 taxes. J is a resolution approving conditional use permit at 5804 Hardscrabble Circle. And then we'll skip K for right now. We'll move on to L is resolution to accept improvements and authorize final payment for city project number 0423, 2023 Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Is there a motion to approve consent items A through K and... A through J and L? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for O. And then Ms. McGregor, you wanted to have discussion on number K.
Yeah, I do. I went by there yesterday along the orchard. I think it's lovely. Lots of people were there. It seemed like a really fun place. I don't remember hearing any extra noise or anything. But the comment that I want to make is if we actually are going to have these plans that we expect people to follow, we should either remove what it is they say they're going to do or enforce that they do it. And at the moment, the owners from two years ago said that they would put in noise reduction...
Baffles.
Thank you. And to my knowledge, they have not. And again, I don't care if they do or if they don't, but if we, if we as a city are expecting them to do so, then I don't think we should just give them a blanket five years in order to not get it done. So my recommendation is that we give them maybe two years. I haven't heard anything about whether they have money problems or whether they have any kind of problems. I just, and like I said, if they don't want to do it or they have other reasons not to do it, come back and take it out of there. But to just blanket give this five years, I just don't think is right.
So, okay, a couple things. I think the five years is okay, and here's why. Because with the IPU, we can go in at any time and we can say, you have to do this now, okay? So the conditional use permit, or the IPU permit, is not a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit runs with the land forever, okay? We can't pull it, okay? So an IPU unless they don't follow the rules. An IPU is a little bit different and we have a little more... The city has a little more flexibility in that. Now, what we can do in the conditions that we put on it, we could say that you have to put the baffles in by such and such a date. I think it'd be unfair to say tomorrow, you know?
I agree with that.
But if you want to do baffles in there, if you want to keep that in there as a condition for their IPU, you can say they have to do it by such and such a date. Now, here's the reason why I'm suggesting we keep the five-year IPU in place, because once that five-year ends...
Is it IUP or I...?
I... Yes, thank you. IP, yes, thank you. I... Once that's in place, or once, let's just say you do it for two years, then they have to come back and they have to go through the whole process again. And they have to do the... The planning commission has to do the public hearing again. It has to come back to the city council. It has to be the whole process again. So what I'm saying is if you put these conditions in and they're not meeting the conditions, we can pull that at any time.
You said that we have it.
But we could...
We could.
So we could say, put the baffles in by such and such a date.
Okay, that's...
If you wanted to add that.
That's fine.
So just one question. I think we should also find out, has noise been an issue?
I would like to have a little chat about this as well.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
All right. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I did go to the planning commission meeting. There were three families that were there, Kent Lee, Lori Cotola, and Gary Pettis. And they were concerned that there would be problems with noise. The current owners said they're no longer allowing any kind of drums because that really carries. I actually drove over there when they had a function, not this Sunday, but the Sunday before. It was a rather large event. I heard nothing, no music whatsoever from the parking lot. And you kind of have to go over a little bit of a hill down to a tent. And this is my... What I perceived them saying is that this is the kind of music they would normally use, not... They're not going to do big orchestras. They have to be done by 10 o'clock. There's fines involved if it goes after 10. And that it's like an acu... They just want like an acoustic guitar kind of music. I could hear nothing from the parking lot. And from what I've gathered, it's... These three families have had problems for not just these two years that there's new owners. This isn't a new thing. As far as baffles, they don't need baffles for an acoustic guitar that's done at 10 o'clock, especially because they don't... You can really barely hear this. What they do have to have is a decibel reading, a noise decibel reading. I think it's like 64 decibels, if I'm correct. Does anyone know what that number is?
Something in there.
Yeah. Something in there. And there's a very easy device, and there's a kind of one you can use on your iPhone, but it's not terribly... It doesn't record and it's maybe not be that accurate. But they are willing to look into getting a permanent device that measures the decibels that the state allows and be immediately available if there's any kind of complaints. So I think to ask them, they're wonderful neighbors. The amount of money they've already given back to the community, I think exceeds somewhere $100,000. They're really doing this to be great neighbors in Minutrista. And they've put, it looks like, a lot of money into it. I think it looks really beautiful. And so I think forcing them to buy baffles, I think if they're willing to monitor their sound...
I think they sent out, and I saw in our packet that they sent out an email too, so if the neighbors have an issue, they have a contact, an immediate contact.
Now, that is where I'd have a problem. I did try to call every hour today on the hour, and no one answered the phone. And I left multiple messages, and I said, I was trying to reach a live person. And when you get leave a voicemail or go to our website, that is not going to cut it. I called 10, 11, 12, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 519. Just saying. Okay, so anyway, I'm a totally fan, but I think if you say you will answer the phone, that better go to somebody's beeper and someone better pick up the phone. That's just my two cents.
And yeah, just as... Hold on, I'll have you guys come up in just a second. So Peter, did you have comments or questions?
I would agree with Ann on this. I was on the planning commission when all this happened, and the new owners were the ones that were talking to us about putting in the sound edding equipment. And as far as I can tell, nothing has happened there, and the neighbors still have the same complaint. So I think we really need to address this. The other thing I'll point out is talking with staff today, this said that police have come out and have not cited anybody, and they haven't seen a noise problem themselves. So I think in fairness to the owners, I think we need to get more data. And I like the idea of having monitoring equipment so that we know, okay, at the property line, this is a problem or it's not a problem. But you know, I think at this point, it's, you know, just a matter of... Well, I think we need more data.
Okay.
But it's gone on for a long time, and to Ann's point, nothing seems to be addressed. So I really think we need to act on this.
Okay, so when you say act on it, so you're saying add baffles in as a condition?
Well, that's what they agreed to initially, and so I think that's important. And I think putting in the sound monitoring system would be a great help, both for them and the neighbors, so that they can say, well, look, it's just 60 decibels that they're... You know, it's meeting their requirement.
Right.
But right now, it's the neighbors versus the owners.
Okay. So the applicants are here, so I'm just going to give them an opportunity. If you come, you have to come to the podium. Please state your name and address. We need that for the record. And maybe just one of you has to say your name and address.
I'm Esther Michael. My address is 4496 North Shore Drive inbound.
Thank you.
Right, well, same address.
Okay.
I'm Crystal Madison, and I reside at 619 North Gate Circle in Winston.
Okay. So what about the baffles? Because I do remember a couple years ago, they were mentioned and so on. Give us some background on that.
So I think, I was asking Nicholas last week because there's some confusion, I think, on the baffles. I don't remember... I remember Steve Grodding that represented the sellers on the property bring up baffles and he brought all this stuff. And I'm saying, when you look into them, what we went and did at the start, because my understanding, the previous owners had some people running the orchard before them that were allowing, you know, big bands and loud, you know, music and a bunch of stuff going on, and they weren't paying attention to the neighbors. So when we took over, we went through the process of starting real slow. I think the first year, any bodies, man? One?
One.
And we wrote this new contract, no bands. You know, mostly it's, you know, we have a guitarist or people that, you know, just play music. So we got rid of that to get rid of the big drums. We, you know, were monitoring the music, you know, with the decimal reader around the fence. We, so we put in penalties in our contract. We also made them end earlier in our contract. And our whole idea is kind of more quality over quantity when it comes to the weddings and events. And so we thought we'd see how it goes to really understand what the issues were. Since that moment, we have never had anybody contact us about an issue, except for you had...
I had one concern from a neighbor who, at the last hearing, are in the meeting, and we contacted them, and I gave them my girl's line. And we've actually been in touch many times, so I feel like that was handled at that time. It was more of just, you know, it was loud that night, and that wasn't actually, I guess, in his own excuse, but there was another night across the room. And when we left that night, there didn't even be riddles to figure out. He said, I don't know if it was them or us, but we have different...
So since then, you know, we've... Since this issue's been brought, we've heard from the neighbors, we issued this letter with all of our phone numbers. So the number that we put in the letter is our personal cell phone number, not the main line. So we let all the neighbors know our emails and our personal cell phone numbers so they can call us directly.
We created, and we need not just for neighbors, we need back in issues that they have, we do our personal cell phone numbers.
Because we want to stay on top and understand the issues more, so we've been, you know, going along the best line, monitoring. And it seems like so far, all the results have been below the 60. Eventually, we want to build a building on the site as opposed to the tent. In the meantime, we don't allow them to open the tent walls during weddings either. We keep that pretty close, you know, pump them up. And so with the neighbors speaking last week at the planning commission, we're going to, you know, in the off-season, look at different things we can do to just to stop the sound from traveling very far in the meantime. But our ultimate goal is instead, you know, building a bunch of structure because we didn't know the real issues. And we haven't heard any issues until recently that were now, you know, in the off-season, to try to do something to muffle it even further.
I would just like to add one thing to that. Sorry, we've had a long weekend this weekend, but thank you for appreciating what we're doing because we... It is a labor of love. It really is. And we are not playing ignorant. There's so many layers. Like, we bought an orchard, we bought a winery, and in that orchard, there's not just the trees, there's huts, and there's food, and we are like learning. So we didn't even put events up front. It wasn't even on our radar. We didn't push it. We honored one that was pre-done before we purchased it. We just honored it. So it's not like we're avoiding putting up anything. We weren't even putting on anything. And so the second year, we were told, and it was in the council meeting, that they did have a back sound stage, and the same people still complained, and it still went up. And so we dove deeper in with the previous management for the, I guess, the ones that kind of really took advantage of all some of it. And that they were the ones letting it go till 11, 12 o'clock at night. They were the ones letting loud bands and loud DJs and tent walls open. And so we just have really creeped upon this slowly, like we're stopping it, we're not going to 11, but we don't want to be until 11, like, and then cleaning up after everybody. So we stopped it at 10. And we... We... There are no bands, and we have our walls down. And I get, you know, there's places like the walls aren't going to completely stop it.
Right.
But it does muscle it a little bit, right? So, and honestly, in the meeting that you were at, we were saying, up until this, like hoping to get an extension, we have not personally... We have email on there. You have spoken to Ken and Zena multiple times. We have not formally got... We don't... We asked for proof of an email, just you have an email that you wrote us so we can... We did not get any of that, except the one that you discussed at the last meeting. So we kind of feel blindsided that it's happening in this final hour. And, you know, most neighbors really, really give us, you know... In this letter we wrote immediately the next morning, we hand-delivered it to, I think, 45 neighbors up to three miles away. And we created, it's called Feedback at Minutaka Orchard, and it's only for our neighbors. And it has our cell... Your cell phone number. It's our personal emails. And it's just that email is only for our neighbors, for good, bad, and everything in between.
Thank you.
So that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, thank you.
And...
Yeah. So again, what you... Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I say one thing?
Okay.
Also, since our planning commission, last week, we took immediate steps, and we did change a few additional things on our contract too. Instead of the 60 decibels that is allowed by law, we personally just chose to lower that to 50. We had two weddings this weekend, and we monitored at the property line of the neighbors who have had an issue, and it maintained at 44 or 46 all night long. And that was with us, making no adjustments, other than us saying that we're not going to allow it to go above 50. And that's just something that we just want to do in good faith.
Contact you there. Companies for the sound...
Yeah, that's also, we have also contacted some third-party companies to do some of them for us. So we're waiting.
And for that, so yeah. Not all of these...
So it's not a... We just, we're trying.
Yeah.
We're trying.
Okay.
I think, okay, I think from my point of view, there may be some misunderstanding. I'm saying that if we're going to give them an IUP for five years, and they have proven, because, I mean, I agree with you about more data maybe needed, but if they've proven that there isn't an issue with noise, then take it out of the IUP. That's my point. My point is why leave it in there and force them to do something?
Okay.
That they don't necessarily need to do.
Okay. So question for you. If we take it out and then there is a noise issue, can we add it back in? Or can we adjust it? Or can we make some other adjustments?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you're going to be stuck with what you put in the IUP now as your conditions.
Okay.
So it's best to put in conditions that, you know, you may think they might potentially violate, so that you have something to fall back on in the end.
Can you say then, to Ann's point, can you say as a condition, should noise continue or be an issue? Should it be or become an issue, then we will require baffles? Can that be a condition?
Madam Mayor, I think you can. You would just have to finesse that a little bit more, you know? What does noise be an issue mean?
Okay.
Is it an issue to me or to the neighbors? And how much noise, like how many decibels, you know? You're going to have to come up with a trigger.
It seems like the 60 decibels was...
They see that.
That's kind of the max, if you will. So if we were to stipulate that should the noise be 60 decibels or higher, or higher than 60 decibels, let's just say for a number of events, and we can name them, you know, for five events or two events or whatever, you can maybe put that number, then we have to look at requiring them to put in baffles. I mean, can we do that? David, what?
Well, I guess I'm... We don't... It's not a condition right now that they install baffles.
Okay. It isn't?
No. I mean, in the resolution that's before you, I mean, there's the history that was given in the background, but I'm going... I was pretty sure we didn't have that, but I'm going through all the conditions in the resolution before you this evening. There's not a requirement that they install baffles. I mean, the one of most importance would be condition number 11, when it talks about all noise pollution, it'll be defined and restricted by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Those are the guidelines that we've followed with the orchard for a number of years now because that is, again, the Minnesota PCA that has these regulations, and it goes through a number of bullet points there. Nowhere does it say that they need to put baffles. The important one would be the property owner shall take all necessary steps to contain the noise produced by all such devices within the permanent or temporary... I mean, it goes through a number of things here that I think to the mayor's point, there's enough there that, you know, what they've said tonight, I think they're doing.
They're doing that, right.
They're taking all of these steps to try to combat all of this.
Yeah, okay.
So it is not a condition. That was talked about a couple years ago, but it is not in here that...
I don't think it was a couple years ago either.
Well, I would... No, it wasn't...
It was talked about.
It was correct. It wasn't a condition. It was, again, probably the realtor maybe sold more than it's sounding like, more of what was going to happen than what actually happened. But that certainly was a point of... That was presented to the council back when we were... If you all recall, that was when we were doing meetings virtually.
Well, I don't think you were here yet.
No, no, I was here.
You were here.
I was here for the whole thing.
Yeah, okay.
I was here for the whole thing. And it was 2021. And so, yeah, no.
Okay.
Okay, so I hear you.
Yeah.
So now going back to, do we have any recent complaints?
There's been ones in the last couple of years that went to the police department. Officer did go out on site. No citations were issued. The officer did not feel as if the noise was enough to constitute a citation, given what they witnessed.
Letters are from the last month.
Well, but when you buy a house next to a freeway and then you complain about the road noise, you know, you have to kind of...
I think Eric Cutters is a longer one. I think that's disingenuous, maybe.
Yes.
I think those people have lived there quite a while, so...
Do you think that there should still be some documentation of the decibel levels?
Yes, I think otherwise we're just kind of talking about what the residents...
And that is a condition.
That is a condition.
That is agreed upon a condition.
But we're not seeing any of that data. I'm not seeing, you know, I haven't...
Yeah, they do have it.
Well, I'd like to see it. I mean, we haven't had any of that.
No, but here's the thing. I don't think we need to see it. Then they just... Then the condition would be that you do this and submit it to staff because we're not, we're not the police, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
We set the conditions, and then the conditions go to staff.
Madam Mayor and Council, if I may, I mean, I think the idea here, and this is how historically it was going with the previous owners as well, yes, the data is there for us as a city if we want it, but the idea is if a complaint is made, you know, an officer comes out, the data is now there, right? That they can see it, witness it, and then also they'll have the data there available to the officer to go...
Has that happened? Has that happened?
They did come out. I mean, they said they called Lockmore Smith this year, and we've never had a single visit by law that they approached us in the way we have stuck on state here in all of them. So they may have...
So the police could ask then, so we just need to make it clear that if the police are called, that then they know that they should ask for the data. So the police were called once since you've owned the property.
Yeah, but they never had...
Right, but they were called once since you've owned the property, and you've only heard of complaints up to in the last month.
Well, isn't that because it's coming up for renewals?
Yeah, they got a notice.
So there's... Residents are still concerned about it.
I think it should be postponed.
Why? Why would we postpone it?
Because we still need more data.
Regarding what?
We have to, we have to respect the people that live there who are complaining.
Well, but that's the problem. There's only been one formal complaint. That's the thing. And the one formal complaint...
Shouldn't penalize them.
Yeah, I mean, if it had... There's how many... Okay, if I count the neighbors that are like immediate, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's like seven parcels, maybe eight, that are closest, okay? Now, of those seven, I don't even know if we've had one complaint, but even if we had one complaint in two years, that's... So I'm just asking, if you have a business of this nature, do you, do you make them do a whole bunch of changes because of one complaint in two years?
No, we don't.
All right.
No, I'm not out to make them do anything, actually.
Okay.
I just want to be sure that whatever they are going to do, that they're not going to have continuous complaints from their neighbors. I just want to be sure that whatever they are going to do, that they're not going to have continuous complaints from their neighbors.
But they might continually complain even if they abide by the, and they've even lowered their, uh, their, out of the goodness of their hearts, lowering the decibel level they're willing to go to just to be nice, good neighbors. And these three neighbors were, didn't like the music from the past owners. So it's almost like, now that it's going forward, let's just, let's nip this in the bud before we have to still live next door to a venue. It's kind of how it sounds.
We don't share the data with the neighbors and what the actual, um, decibels are, then they don't know that, hey, you're in compliance with, with the rules. I mean, you can tell them that, but if they don't actually see it, or we don't see it, and we don't know, you know, who's, who's right.
I, I, I guess my question to that would be, um, whether is, what constitutes a valid complaint? Because if they say, if they're complaining that they can hear the music and we're still on that forty decibel, I'm not doing any of that.
Well, that's good. If you have, you say you have that record, so you can just show them, hey, it was a forty and.
And that's what we're keeping track of now, and that's why we're trying to do a third party to do that. So it's not even monitoring by ourselves. It's a third party for a, a third party unit.
Device.
Yeah, for everyone.
How will that work? Uh, what, what are the mechanics of that?
You know, that's something I'm learning about right now too. This is, I'm not, I'm not a tech savvy person, but that's why we're trying to contact a third-party company that is, so they can instruct us how to do it. But they have decimal reading machines. Um, we have, we have one now, but it's not a permanent one. It's one that we have to manually activate. Um, but the, the, they have machines that are permanent and that give those readings. And that's what probably we're going to have up there. But we've, we've not been, like I said, we had two weddings this weekend and we didn't adjust any of their volumes or tell them to turn it down. And I got raised to change forty-four or forty-six all night long at multiple locations.
And every event, um, the onsite with that coordinator, every thirty minutes to an hour goes all the way around the property. So I feel like when we're asking for data, I guess we would have had that had we known there was people complaining about it. We just found this out two years, so we have our, you know, our, um, our word to tell you that we've been doing it and our word that we have a lot of complaint about it. But now, knowing what we know, we only want data, right? We only want data because, like yours, to your point, and to a scaffolding's point, if we could spend the money on that, is that going to solve it? Is that going to make them happy? So all we can do is abide by the law, even, we'll lower it from that and, and, and then get a legitimate decimal reader so they don't have to be on their phone. Ours is a little more advanced. It's an actual decimal rate reader. Um, but again, if they, and they have that, because they've said they have that, they've never, they've never really said us, we've never heard of this until coming up on this, um, two-year extension.
Okay, so, so we, I think we need documentation on the decibels.
Yeah.
So that when the people complain, something can be shown to them.
How about this then? How about this? Okay, first of all, they're going to have to have some events in order to get more data, okay? So I would suggest that we approve the IUP tonight and that we, we ask that they provide us then, let's just say at the end of the year, because they have to have multiple events, um, at the end of the year with their data regarding the decibels. Would that, they provide that to the council so that you, we can, we can see that they're monitoring it at the sixty decibels or less. Would, would that work?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to approve the IUP tonight for five years with the, um, our staff's conditions. We're going to add one condition that you provide us at the end of the year. Um, our last meeting is December sixth, so it would be prior, December fourth, sorry. I'm thinking December sixth, that's, okay, nevermind, that's another date. Um, so you provide us prior to that date, um, and staff will be in contact with you with the, with the, um, data that you've collected. Okay, does that, all right.
Can't be from our, the only worry I have, happily, yes, but I don't know how quickly we, what we're really looking into is getting a professional data reader that's stationed in places so we're not walking. I don't know how quickly that turns around.
We'll take your data for now and if there's, yeah, yeah.
And how many things that, like, I, um, last.
So you have one.
It was rain, I mean, did that storm come through? So, I, it was like eighty decibels, like, you know, that year was slumbering, I think, so those aren't really accurate, so.
We're talking music.
Right.
I mean, yeah. Does that, David, does that make sense? Okay, okay, so with that, is there a motion to approve? Just a second. Um, approving interim use permit or IUP, um, for agricultural entertainment at sixty-four eighty and sixty-five thirty County Road twenty-six with staff's, um, conditions as presented in our packet and that they will provide the council on December fourth at our council meeting with their readings of, from their events from here going forward to the, until the fourth of December. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Lacy made that motion and Ms. McGregor seconded that. Any further questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
All right, next, um, we have a business item and it's approve our professional services agreement for twenty-twenty-four Millin overlay project. Ms. Fowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, so approximately a month ago, we spoke to the council at a work session with regards to proposed project for twenty-twenty-four. Um, before you is a proposal to prepare the plans and specifications, um, go through, through the, through bidding and award of project for, um, the proposed project for next year. The project includes the resurfacing of Hermitage area, uh, which includes Hermitage Trail, Hermitage Circle, and Stonebridge Lane. Uh, includes resurfacing of Amber Lane from Highland Road to the end and of Nike Road from County Road ninety-two to where the Batumina section ends. Um, council may recall, we originally looked at including Pine Circle in this project. However, uh, when the cores were obtained, um, throughout these, these areas, the coring for Pine Circle indicated that a, an overlay would not be recommended, um, project due to the pavement condition. A full-depth reclamation is proposed. Um, so this proposal, um, would exclude Pine Circle from the twenty-twenty-four project. And then, um, with discussions with staff, um, we recommend that council consider including that in a future project where reclamation would take place. Uh, the proposal is included in your packet for your consideration. It outlines the hours allocated to perform these tasks. Um, if approved, uh, the, uh, the agreement would be for seventy thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. Um, it would be on an hourly basis. And so, um, and that, that means we would bill at our hourly rates up to that dollar amount. Um, and if anything, uh, anything changed in the scope of work, we would come back to the council for authorization to, um, go over that amount. Uh, we typically look at, um, fifteen percent indirect costs, um, in the budget for this, uh, for this work. Um, so with our total street budget of just under six hundred thousand, um, these services, I think, were, were around twelve percent at this point um, for design and bidding. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has about the proposed project or the, or the proposed professional services.
Thank you, Ms. Fowski. Council, questions? I would assume we do the Pine Circle then, or, um, with Trillium?
Yes.
I mean, since it's close proximity as well.
Yes, um, Madam Mayor, members of council, we would look at pulling that in probably in twenty-twenty-five, uh, with the reclamation project.
Okay, all right then. Um, if there are no more questions or discussion, then is there a motion to approve professional services agreement for the twenty-twenty-four Millin overlay project?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four oh. So next we'll move on to administrative items, staff reports. Anything, Ms. Fowski?
Um, Madam Mayor, members of council, just provide a quick update where we're at with the reconstruction project. Um, the curb work is almost near completion. Um, the remaining curb is, uh, with respect to the individual driveways to the properties, only, uh, curb was only poured across half of those driveways. Um, so the, the curb contractor will be back to do that, um, probably near the end of this week. Um, and at that point, we're probably looking at next week, the street contractor to come in and start getting, um, that, that road base prepped, um, for paving. So, uh, we are seeing progression through there. Uh, and I have also been talking about restoration items such as dog fences, irrigation systems, all those repairs taking place. Um, and then, um, after we get, uh, get the pavement done in there or get the, get the, um, solder seed in there and wrap it up for the season, so it's coming.
Any questions? All right. Any other staff reports? Okay, council reports?
I have, uh, a little bit of information. Uh, Betsy Brady with the, um, West Tonka Community and Commerce is asking for volunteers for three events that they're having, um, on October, uh, well, actually on October twenty-sixth, they're letting us know that their meeting is being moved to the twenty-sixth because, um, because of MEA, I guess. So they're moving their meeting to a different date and they're having it at the Gillespie Center. And they're having an event on October twenty-eighth, the trucker, trunk or treat, I guess. Trunk or treat at the Back Channel Brewery. And they're looking for volunteers. And then they have a Santa tour on November eighteenth and tree lighting. But I'm not sure where that's going to be, so I'll have to get back to you on that, but, because I don't.
But that's mounds. We don't, we don't promote mounds.
I'm sorry. Well, it's West Tonka Community and Commerce, so anyway. Um, uh, okay, so thank you. Uh, what else? Uh, and then I did go to the planning commission and must, much of the discussion was about the, uh, Minnetonka Orchards and that they just would like them to monitor the decibels.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Peter?
Well, John Chisholmberlin, uh, sat in for me, um, for the Watershed District, Missouri, I know you're free. And, uh, we did get awards from the, uh, the state acronyms are kind of confusing me. They call it Bowser.
Bowser, Border Soil and Water Resources.
What's Bowser? Anyway, it's a water and soil resources part. Uh, but we got grants of two hundred and forty thousand for that Watershed District for next.
For the alum treatment.
I know this is.
Oh, this is a different one.
But, you know, it's spread over the whole Watershed.
Okay.
So we'll be talking about, you know, what we can do. And I'll talk with Brian at Three Rivers to see if there's some things particularly for Minatrista that, you know, maybe we could get some of that money, which we would have to match. If we can get some of it, that would be great. So I think that was a big thing. And, yeah, they're all about the alum treatment. And, uh, there's going to be a, um, presentation at Halewood's Farm about it. And, uh, well, that, that's coming up this weekend, uh, seventh and eighth.
Oh, okay.
So they're very excited about how well that's going.
Good, thank you.
Um, Gillespie Center, we had a flea market this past Saturday that I think was, was relatively successful. Um, the biggest thing with the Gillespie Center is that they have a lot of trouble getting people there. And this had a fair amount of advertising and that there were a number of people showing up. I would have liked to have seen double the number of people. So we're still working towards that kind of thing. And there, um, what has to be ferreted out are exactly what it takes for younger people to bring older people into the center. And I don't think we have a real handle on that yet. Um, their next board meeting is November ninth. That'll be the last one of the year.
Do a pickleball court. Everybody will come.
Isn't that true? It's probably true. Isn't that a mouth?
It is. Remember, the city is officially members. No, I'm joking.
How much, how much did they raise? Do you know?
So Ms. Lacy, here's, I was joking about that because, of course, as you know, we too here in Minatrista are having our very, very first holiday, um, tree lighting event on November thirtieth. Um, so hopefully all of you will be here. Um, in fact, tomorrow we'll have a committee meeting to talk more details and we'll get, um, we'll continue to keep you updated on that. Um, but we are moving forward with that. So, um, yeah, that was, that was why I said, but that's mounds tree lighting. So we want to make November thirtieth, November thirtieth is the date to have on your calendar.
Santa sleigh is going to go over Minatrista.
Yes. So, yeah, and we have, um, the fire trucks, the holiday trucks will be here, possibly, most likely Santa. Someone will have to play be Santa.
The Roncets are going to be here, I heard.
Yeah, there's just going to be a lot of, lot of fun things, so, all right. Um, that's all I have. I'll, I'll make some more reports at our next meeting, uh, coming up. Last week was pretty quiet for me, unusual. Anyhow. Anything else?
No.
You're good? All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four oh. We'll see you all here on October? Six, fifteen, sixteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, that's what I thought. All right, just around the corner, all right.
Just around the corner.